And this isn't a change, but the housing permits, remember we did that last year. This was passed last year.
Yes.
The housing permits paid between January 2nd and March 31st will be the face value. If paid between April 1st and June 30th, there's a $10 late fee per unit. And if paid between July 1st to October 31st, there's a $25 late fee. There will be one reminder, and that's it. And that's it?
Do you have a motion? Second?
I'll say it.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Priseng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
And I'll tell you, I'd like to add in there, since we passed this, if you people aren't aware of the way it works with hired police officers, and that's because we're talking about the budget right now, there's a civil service process you have to go through. There's a lengthy process, and you do all kinds of testing, and it takes months to get this done. And once you get that list established, then you can only pick off the top of that list, your top two or three off the top of the list. That's how you get them. Now, that list is up, is good for eight, nine months, something like that, and then you have to do it all over again. But we have a list already established. So instead of going into next year and getting an established and a new list, I'd like, what I want to do is make a motion that we, Michael Mostowey, if I pronounced that right, is the next guy on the list, which we would have hired earlier if we'd had the money. But right now, if we get him hired, then you don't have to worry about testing and all that stuff again for next year, or I should say. So my motion is that we contact Mr. Mostowey to see if he's, if he's still interested in that position, to seize our necks on the test, and get him under wraps before the, you know, the list runs out, and get him on the street, because we need, as we said before, we need the officer. So my nomination is to hire Michael, or have the chief contact Michael Mostowey, to replace that officer that we bugged you for. Need a second?
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
And David, how many police officers will actually be working the streets then after that gentleman's hired, if he agrees?
I think the chief just said we have 11. Our goal is to try to get to 12.
Actually working the streets?
We have 10. They all work, they're all always want to work the street.
But there's some involved with the case, the 29, 30-year-old case. Are they on the street as well?
Yeah, nobody, yeah, everybody does everything, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think what she's asking is how many officers are actively performing the police streets. At the current time, the 29-year-old cold case investigation you're referring to is a full-time investigation moving forward. I would think that the community would want closure for a family.
Absolutely.
And sometimes you have to, you know, weigh what's important. That investigation is very important to the city of Sunbury, and the Sunbury Police Department.
It's a shame that wasn't done any years ago.
Let's answer your question, Chief, because why don't you guys do that? How many guys?
There's currently myself, which I'm administrative anyhow, and so there's tools on it.
Right, but one that's normally would be on the streets is doing that.
Correct, correct. But come January, they will be going back to the street, and we'll be working the investigation.
Okay, let me ask your question, George.
I have one question right there.
Yes, sir.
It was, it was regarding to, like, hiring a police officer.
We have your name, I'm sorry?
Donald Healy.
Okay, go ahead.
I had a, kind of a question. It was concerning hiring an officer. Like, you go by a list. Has the city of Sunbury ever considered hiring a black or an ethnic cop?
It's a civil service, sir. It's a civil service process that...
I understand.
Okay, well, we can't do anything but the civil service process.
What I'm asking is a simple question. Has you ever considered hiring a black or a Puerto Rican or an Asian cop to have a diverse, you know, and a positive role model for the black youth or Puerto Rican youth to look upon in the city of Sunbury?
If an ethnic person would be in that top three, we could consider that. We can't, we can't just hire the seventh guy because of that situation. So as the whole testing process goes through...
It has to go in order.
Right, you have to take off the, there's veterans' points involved, there's various things that get involved.
And one thing, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there was minorities on the last list of testing.
There was. It's, of course, we would like to recruit and hire minority individuals. The problem is, it's a civil service test, and it's the same test, it's a standardized test that's given throughout the state of Pennsylvania. Basically, it's open to anybody. Minorities can apply as long as they meet your criteria. The SEC criteria to become a police officer in the state of Pennsylvania. The problem is, we don't, for whatever reason, there's not as much interest in law enforcement, so we don't have as many people applying. Not only has the number of Caucasian folks who apply to law enforcement dropped, the minorities have never risen to quite the level that we want. So it's really a state issue that they're either going to have to reduce the standards to become a police officer, or, you know, we're going to continue to cycle.
I just was wondering, in any, I mean, we would reach outside the community to farther areas to, you know, come up with a chief, or come up with this and that. I mean, I, I just disbelieve that there's not a minority police officer in Philadelphia that didn't score very high on the civil service test that might be awaiting to be hired, that would be considering moving to an area like ours. The crime rate isn't that high, but I would love to see a minority cop in here, to show the, a minority youth could look towards that officer as being a positive role model. I was in the military, so I had all minorities around me, and thank God, every single one of them was willing to join our armed forces that protects our United States of America. That's all I got to say.
And like I say, I assure you, if they can get through the test and finish up there, they would be considered just as much as everybody else would.
Just one other question.
Yep.
With the potential of this another officer coming on, will officers still be on the streets as a single? Will they be riding double? Is there...
That's all to be determined at the beginning of the year. Obviously, you know, the officer's going to be hired, going to be trained, so there'll be a period where he's going to have to ride as a field training officer. A lot of these issues you speak of aren't dry issues. You know, they're, they're very challenging for a small department. I just, we passed the new operations manual. Of course, the union folks have the opportunity to grieve that manual. Part of that manual is a brand-new field training program that I created specifically for the Sunbury Police Department. It all depends on what happens, what grievances are filed, what, you know, it all depends on the cooperation that we receive from the rank-and-file officers.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Open container waiver, Jim?
Yes, for New Year's Eve, we need a passage of an open container clearance for New Year's Eve. I'd like that motion.
Eister?
Yes.
Priseng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes. Also for New Year's Eve, the noise. I can make one more motion.
Priseng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Eister?
We will pay and voice his best.
From the general fund, we have $56,815.16. And from liquidated, we have $544.81. I'd like to make that motion that we...
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Priseng?
Yes.
Eister?
And we have taxes on our ratio.
Yep.
There's 11 people. The reasons are low income, SSI deceased, two particular, SSI and deceased. And that's the, I'd like to make that motion that we're generating people.
Rechner?
Yes.
Eister?
Yes.
Priseng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Henry?
Okay, gentlemen, sir, you had an SRI question?
Yes, did you find any records in SRI, how many meetings we making with Megan and with SRI for the Community Colors of the 370 Market Street?
No, no.
Last time, last time, I paid you, I paid $5,000 to SRI for the, for the 370 Market Street.
Okay.
Did you find any more records? How many meetings we making with Megan make for the Community Colors of the 370 Market Street?
No, we did not find anything different about it. That was, what, two years ago, three years ago?
That's five, six years ago. The thing is...
Oh, we have to check that.
All the time, you say to me and the others, no parking. These excuses for no parking, or because I'm outsider, or Greek, and they don't want to make my building something of progress for the Sunbury.
They tried, they made, they made an effort to do something, and it didn't work for your, for your building.
Mr. Mayor?
There's nothing we can find.
We making, we making so many meetings without me. Megan's here.
She has nothing to do with SRI anymore.
She left, but she was, she was and tried to help me, like she said to me.
Right.
But the thing is, I wanted to know how many secret meetings they making behind my back, and she tell me, no, have my telephone and my lawyer telephone, and she don't call me. Something, something going wrong in here, and I want to speak on the news, because in three minutes, I can't say nothing. All right? I'm wait for nine, 10 years, almost, next year, going 10, 10, 10 years for the Community Colors. So you making jails, and the kids be victims of the drugs, and you victimized second time, put them in the jail, and close the schools.
Okay.
So...
Sir, here, listen to me, please. There was an effort made, there's been effort made throughout the years to try to fill your building. It hasn't been successful, but nobody's put in there.
No, 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 Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, the people that are working for SRI, I want to make an investigation, because all the time, like I say, I go over there, she say to me, you sell the building, you sell the building? She no got the position to tell me, you sell the building. She got the position to help me to do something for the Sunbury and my building.
And they tried, it wasn't successful?
No, no, sir. All the time, she tried to bring it.
They're counting on you helping.
I want to talk to the news, what happened in my story for the 10 years now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Anything else, somebody else? Yeah, George.
In regards to the parking situation for 370 Market Street? Do the human service building have those kind of restrictions for parking? Because I'm sure that there was a lot of people in and out of that building, that it was the human service building. What kind of criteria did they have for parking? Where did they park?
On Market Street, most likely.
It would depend what was in there, right?
That's kind of my point.
What they wait on Market Street?
That's kind of my point.
George, George, just to make clear, the building's located in central business. The only parking that's required in central business is for hotels, motels, and buses. Everything else is exempt.
So there is no parking issued, that parking required?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else for the other police department? Chief, would you like to add a floor?
Yes, sir. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk on social media, been made aware of this weekend. So I'm here to address members of council and be transparent with the members of the republic as far as what has occurred and what has not occurred. As you are all aware, as I reported in executive session, I was recently admonished by Marilek Karlovic as he attempted to assert influence over conditions of my employment. I was asked to violate the canons of police ethics by being told that to keep my job, I would have to pledge absolute loyalty to Marilek Karlovic. I am 100% completely unwilling to violate my primary responsibilities as a police officer, which is as follows. The protection of the people of the United States through the upholding of their laws. Chief among these is the United States Constitution and its amendments. A law enforcement officer always represents the whole of the community in its legally expressed will, and is never the arm of any political party or clique. The very word "absolute" in the context it was used meant that my loyalty was a demand that must be met, or would make or break whether or not I had employment upon his taking office. The mere fact that I was asked to pledge loyalty to the Marilek in being encouraged to engage in politics by making public accusations against members of city government to further one man's agenda is disgusting and intolerable. Furthermore, as the city of Sunbury's police chief, I am an upholder of the law. I must be aware of the limitations and prescriptions in which the people through law have placed upon me. I must recognize the genius of the American system of government that gives to no man, groups of men, or institution absolute power. And I must ensure, as a prime defender of that system, I do not pervert its character. I've served as a police officer for over 20 years, and I understand the importance of loyalty. However, my loyalty lies in the oath I took and the people I serve. The mere fact that an elected official would feel the need to require a pledge of absolute loyalty, in my professional opinion, is corrupt and dangerous. I cannot and will not sell my loyalty for promise of future employment. I am respectfully requesting that should Marilek Karlovic fail to retract his terms and conditions of pledging absolute loyalty in order to maintain my position as chief of police, that his request be viewed as a without clause constructive termination, and that clause C of my contract regarding salary and benefits for 12 months following the termination be honored. Should the city wish to negotiate some other terms or conditions not hereby noted, I am open to discussions. However, I cannot continue to serve as chief of police after January 1, 2018, under the conditions demanded of me by Marilek Karlovic. When I was hired as the chief of police in Sunbury, numerous respected members of the law enforcement community warned me of the culture here, and encouraged me to proceed with caution. In essence, it was a job not many police professionals were willing to take due to the political climate. Instead of demanding pledges of absolute loyalty, perhaps we should demand our officer values are aligned with their oath of office, and we should focus our efforts on removing the politics out of policing in Sunbury. My two decades of law enforcement experience in post-secondary education has demonstrated to me, when a police organization is allowed to become politicized, a dysfunctional department lacking discipline will be the end result. In order to eradicate the old culture within the Sunbury Police Department, there must be a balance of political responsibility, and operational independence does not, that does not come with alternatives. The purpose of this letter is not to resign my position as chief of police. I emphatically stress that it is my wish to continue my employment with the city of Sunbury. However, I cannot honor my oath to the city of Sunbury and the Constitution of the United States under the duress created by Marilek Karlovic's demands. In no way is this letter intended to serve as a will for resignation. This is not the first time I've stood up to political interference, and it won't be the last. Attorney James Bass will be representing me in this matter, and all correspondence and discussions of this issue should include him. Should include him, thank you.
Now, we have one statement from city council, you've been advised to read, and that is, well, first of all, thanks to your comments, Chief. First and foremost, the city has a duty to investigate your formal complaint, and is in process of investigating the issues raised in your letter. The investigation will be conducted by the city's labor and employment law firm. Once the investigation is completed, council will review the investigative report and take appropriate action based upon the findings of the report. Until that investigation is concluded, it is inappropriate for council to comment publicly on any ongoing personnel investigation. So if there's anybody in the audience, and I'm sure there is, that wants to say, we have rules and regulations as to how long you talk, you get your three minutes. You can make any statements you want to make, you know, and want to be cordial enough, but it's not, it's not a debate. We're not, we're not asking questions of the chief or, or Sunbury City Council, basically what I just read you. But anybody, you know, as long as we keep it in within reason, we're going to go. So I just, we need your name when you start, that's all.
Roger Badniew. Is there a witness to this statement? Is somebody had been there when this statement was made?
I guess I, we can't make a comment on the investigation itself.
Then he can make a blatant accusation, and it not be responded to?
Well, it's going to be, that's what we told you, we're going to respond to it with the city labor attorneys. It's going to be investigation, is what we just said.
And who is that?
Who is the city's labor attorney?
Yes.
Official name is?
Campbell, Durn, Lee, Colombo, and Miller.
Philadelphia?
Pittsburgh.
Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh law firm. Go ahead. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Scott Shaker. I'd like to, on behalf of Tim Miller, Barbara Miller's family, the Ricky Wolf family, the 29-year-old cold case that everybody's referring to has a lot to do with us. For 11 years now, I've been free from prison. I was framed for murder I didn't do. That man there was the only one who had the guts to step up, take the reins, and investigate both homicides. To lose him would be a travesty to our community, regardless of who says what, it's, it's wrong. I'd just like to say, you know, in behalf of the Miller family, the Wolf family, my family, Tim, we respect you very much.
Amen.
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Zimmerman. I'm family to Barbara Miller. I was here in 1989 to report her missing. Now, we want the job done right, and Tim Miller, he's been with us. We want it done right, and, thank you, Chief Miller, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Melissa Shaker, mother, business owner in town. As much as I, I understand your plight, there are 4,000 other mothers in this town that want their children protected as well, that want the police on the street, that want to see the police walking around, to not have people not be, want to go shopping downtown, or have the corral members be afraid to walk down Market Street. It can't just be about one family, it has to be about protecting the entire town. You have to be out there and protect everyone, and do your job. And to be scared of the new mayor coming in, how tough does that make you sound? That's ridiculous. You're scared. You're scared. Not scared.
I see a hand.
Someone is.
Yes.
Randy Euner. I just want to applaud people for sticking up for integrity, and I feel that that has to be first and foremost. Integrity is what it is all about, integrity and honesty. And if you don't have integrity and honesty anywhere, then there's going to be the crumbling of everything. And that's what I have to say. And I feel, I'm sorry, I feel that Tim Miller is a man of integrity, and I, I've never heard anything but honesty from him. Amen. Woo hoo.
Sir, I hate, I have something to say.
Name your name.
Don Healy. I hate bringing up every subject, and about integrity, every time I talk about a subject, or about a housing problem, or about maybe the shade trees, how there's a big issue in the whole state of Pennsylvania, and about the true ownership of those shade trees, and how we're being forced and belied into paying for those shade trees, and I, and as far as the taxes around behind it, every time you open your mouth at the city council, you end up having the code enforcement at your house three or four times, and catching fines here and there. So about integrity, I'd rather have less code enforcement officers, more police, I absolutely believe in it. We only have 10,000 people, you know, that we need code running around, and I think two officers is enough. I think we ought to have more officers. I do believe that, thank you.
Okay.
I've known Marilek Karlovic for a while now, and I can say honestly, I've never heard anything even remotely false come out of his mouth. I don't know where these allegations came from, but I truly am very skeptical that could, that they could possibly be true. I really don't see him saying anything. He is about making this community come together, not dissolve. I don't think he would absolute anything, okay? He listens to every person, that is what, that is how he ran his campaign. He went around to every, you know, all of these individuals. He wants input. I'm sorry, sir, I'm very happy your investigation is going well, but I think you're wrong.
I need your name.
Sarah Douglas. Tim, I want to thank you for everything that you've done for the Miller family. You're great. I'm sorry that people feel that there's not enough police force. I disagree with that. There are police on the streets here in Sunbury. My fiance, Edward Miller, has suffered for 28 years, not known about, his mom. And he deserves the answers. That's right. To know that this is his mom, what happened to his mom, we are this close, and he deserves those answers. Imagine if this was your mom. That's right, amen. Imagine.
Sunbury is responsible for not doing a proper investigation.
These answers should have been done, given 28 years ago, and they weren't, and this man is doing what should have been done 28 years ago. Amen. I just want to make a comment here of what I'm observing. I'm still hearing innuendo. I respect you, Tim. You seem to be feeling good now. God love these people, they need closure, they needed closure 29 years ago.
And justice.
Yes. But, but if there was so much concern, David, you were on council and were mayor when this happened. There should have been concern then. There you go.
Okay.
Yes. I'd like to know, my name's Roger Badniew. I'd like to know why council allowed these accusations to be made in an open meeting, and nobody can question the gentleman making them.
Yeah.
The council didn't make these accusations, please understand that. We did not make these accusations because employee rights.
You allowed them to be made at this meeting.
I'm letting them talk right now, aren't I?
Pardon?
Anybody in this room's allowed to talk right now. He, that's his, that's his decision to make, not ours.
No one is making accusations except Tim.
And we're going to investigate that.
And you should have done it in closed session.
That was his choice, not our choice. Our choice is, we're going to do investigation, and we're not talking about it.
But are his comments...
You allowed it to happen. You allowed him to slander someone.
I can't stop you from talking. That's what we're here for tonight, to let people, and we're going to get down to the bottom of it.
In your code of conduct for speaking, you're not allowed to make accusations against anybody.
Thanks. I think we should just say no comment at this point. We have had a complaint raised to us, city council has...
Then why didn't you deal with that in executive session?
...investigation. The complaint has been...
This is slanderous.
At this point in time, it's an ongoing personnel...
Which should have been done in executive session.
We had our executive session, it has nothing to do with him.
But, but you're having innuendo.
You're enabling him.
Before the media to defend the...
All right, yeah, we're done, we can't make a comment, no comment.
Obviously, you invited the media. If we come in there with them, Republican, would you have done this?
There's nothing to do with that.
Obviously, you invited the media, because they're all standing there.
Yeah, you're damn right.
Any other statements? Yes, sir.
My name is Don Lehman. I'm a resident.
Well, please let him talk.
First of all, I have over 31 years' experience in law enforcement in a major city police department. I recently moved back to the area beginning this year, and I, last year, I'm going to preface my comments, that I've never personally met Chief Miller. But with my experience and what I've seen, about two years ago, the mayor was, I was fortunate enough to have a meeting with the mayor and discuss the issues in the police department, and there were many. At that time, he was ready to hire a police chief, spoke to him, and I think he made one heck of a decision in hiring Chief Miller to this point. I had the opportunity to monitor, to watch, to talk to people in the news around the city about the police department. And what I've seen, Chief Miller is making the right decisions at the right time, and he continues to do so, and I hope he continues to do so with the next three years. to do so, and I hope he continues to do so with the next three years of his contract. It was approximately a year ago tomorrow that this city council and mayor offered a full-time contract to Chief Miller, if you're aware. And he accepted it. And he's taken on so much difficulties in the police department when it comes to morale, motivation, working, personnel, writing manual. That's a lot of work, okay, from my experience. I had many years as a supervisor conducting investigations, and I'll tell you this, a cold case investigation is very extremely difficult to do. I applaud him for taking this on. I wish him the very best in his officers. Takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of work, and hopefully you get to the conclusion you're looking for. So, I agree with Councilman Ister when he made the comment, and the city council, the current city council, is all in agreement that this city, I agree with Councilman Ister, will be set back, that Chief Miller is not the chief of police in this city in the upcoming next year and years to come. I look forward to seeing what Chief Miller can continue to do with the police department. We need more police officers. I was glad to hear the council, Bodo and Matt today. And you have my support, Chief. After his statement, what he made today, he has my respect even more than he had before. He's absolutely spot on with that. That comment was made by some council person or politician. I'm not into politics, Chief. Thank you. We hope to see you here, keep at it. Council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
I'm sorry, I didn't take your name, but, I'm sorry. Carol Westley. She made a point of somebody saying something about loyalty. Well, without even a comment, Mayor-elect can't even comment about it. Now, Mayor-elect, he, he had a very great campaign, grassroots, and people liked that. He didn't take a dime to help him run his campaign. And then now, all of a sudden, something like this comes out, without the man able to speak in his defense. And then, second of all, um, is there any way, uh, council can find money next year in the budget to start repairs on the police station? Because the police station should remain on Market Street.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Sandra Heim. I have not heard anybody, I'm, I've been here three years. I've not heard anybody complain about Chief Miller. What I've heard here tonight is an allegation that Kirk Karlovic has threatened him, and I agree, you know, if it's true, that's exactly what. But there's a lot of people here that seem to think it's about defending one case. It's not. Everybody that lives in Sunbury wants justice. It's not about one person. And it's twenty-nine-year-old citizens that all did, and it still needs to be worked. But Kirk Karlovic has done this on his own. I have heard him talk about law enforcement, one-on-one...